Good evening. I would like to call this meeting to order. Today's date is Thursday, October 10th, 2024. This is the regular meeting of the Governing Board of the San Marcos Unified School District. Please let the record reflect that all members are present with the exception of Member Carlson. The San Marcos Unified School District Board of Education meeting is a business meeting of the Board held in public. We welcome and encourage public participation. The expected behavior is that this meeting will be conducted in an orderly fashion. Only the person recognized by the Board President may speak. While that member of the public is speaking, members of the audience must not yell or speak out, regardless of whether you agree or disagree. While public comment is in progress, if you speak out, you are out of order and will be asked to leave the meeting. As adults participate in a public meeting, we need to model civility to our children and students. On behalf of the Board of Education, we thank you in advance for helping us conduct this meeting respectfully. The San Marcos Unified School District is an innovative and collaborative community providing an unparalleled educational experience. Through an engaging and supportive environment, all of our students are challenged, inspired, and poised to excel. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I have played on the list of the United States of America to the great public for which it stands one nation and God into this book with the Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Moved by a member, Mad, second by a member, Martine, to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. The Board met in closed session with legal counsel in regards to expulsion cases number one dash twenty-four twenty-five, number two dash twenty-four twenty-five, number three dash twenty-four twenty-five, and number four dash twenty-four twenty-five. No action was taken. Reports by our Board representatives. We have new representatives, so welcome. So great to see you.
Good evening, school board members and audience. My name is Trinity Moon. I'm a junior at Mission Hills High School. I have a lot of goals for our school this year. There are a few certain things that I'm very passionate about. As a student athlete, I have a large understanding of just how important student mental health is. I've had my fair share of stressful times. I'm also very passionate about student voice and participation, wanting to ensure that everyone feels like they have a place of importance on our campus. In our ASB class, we have a collective goal. Here at Mission Hills, it says, "The Mission Hills ASB Leadership Team will work collaboratively with administration toward increasing student engagement by elevating student voice, with emphasis on the invisible students, in order to create an environment where students feel like they belong in a system where students play a role in our school." I'd like to take a moment to mention the phrase, "the invisible student." The invisible student is something we've been discussing this past year, and I think it is essential to bring up. Countless students at our school fall into this category. They haven't quite found exactly where they fit in, or maybe they just haven't dared to go out and find something they enjoy. This year, I want to help curate an environment where every student feels like they have a place at our school, and I want more students to find a place where they truly enjoy being. Thankfully for me, I have an amazing team of fellow students to help me this year. At Mission Hills, we created a new program within our ASB class called RSVPP. This stands for Raising Student Voice and Participation. My team consists of three other student coordinators who all focus on separate ideas and programs within our school. Together, we meet and discuss certain issues and changes we want to see within our school, and we work together to then plan and execute those ideas. A big thing we've been discussing this past year is the new portrait of a graduate. Last year, I was a member of the Superintendent's Advisory Council, and we spoke a lot about why the students were missing some of these skills. We discovered that a large part of this problem was the loss of connection between middle school and high school. We discussed the addition of more middle school advisories to help create a more of a bridge between our schools, allowing them to share their perspective. One way Mission Hills wants to support this goal is by connecting with our middle schools more. We've expanded our ASB Leadership Development Days to double peak, who's coming to our pep rally tomorrow, and we plan to find more ways to support their leadership programs. Now, moving on to some more exciting things. To start, our football team has upheld a pretty amazing record of five to one this year, ranking fifth in San Diego County and forty-eighth in all of California. We also recently had a new addition of our Mission Hills Girls Flag Football Team, who I say have been killing it this year. They started really well with a record of five to two, and right now they're ranking third overall in their league. Another team that I really wanted to highlight is our field hockey team. As a former player on the team, I can only say amazing things about these girls. They've just been holding their own lately with a record of nine to six and ranking ninth in San Diego County. Another program that I wanted to bring to light is our Cardinal Alliance. And I also just thought I should speak out on it because they've been doing so great this year as well. They've put so much hard work and dedication into their program and their performances, and I think we can all tell how much it just pays off. They recently attended a competition in Arizona this last weekend, and I'd say they did pretty well. They scored a sixth out of twelve teams, and they earned an overall score of sixty or seventy-six point six five. Another thing I wanted to highlight is some clubs we have here at Mission Hills. So we have over seventy clubs at Mission Hills, and I really wanted to highlight some unique clubs we have because I truly believe they have such a positive impact on our community. The first club is called One Stitch at a Time. In this club, they use recycled yarn and materials to crochet and knit newer clothes for our homeless. And I think this is such a creative and amazing way to give back to people in need, and it's also heartwarming to see people using their talents to help others. Another club that I wanted to mention is a newer club called Active Minds. These members are dedicated to advocating for student mental health and wellness, attending events throughout the year where they will get a chance to share their perspective and outlook on the importance of mental health within our students. To quickly rack up, I just wanted to share some upcoming events we have at Mission Hills. So tomorrow, we have our homecoming football game against Torrey Pines. It's going to be really exciting. Along with that, this Saturday, we have our homecoming dance. I know our ASB students and staff have been working so, so hard, and I'm just so excited to see everything come together. Another thing that I wanted to mention was that we'll be starting up our school's Equity Team Meetings again. As a former member, I know it's just very exciting, so I'm happy to see how that goes, including one of our service projects called Socktober, where everybody contributes to donate socks for the homeless. And then at the end of the month, we'll get our very first theater production of Peter and the Starcatcher. So if you would like to go see that, I'm sure it will be amazing. And then again, I just want to thank you all so much for listening, and as always, go Grizzlies.
Trinity. Trinity, I just want to say I am, I was super impressed by your presentation. I'm very proud and excited for everything that you guys will be doing at Mission Hills, and I can't wait for your next presentations. I'm especially excited about what you're doing for mental health and the invisible student because that's so important. So I really appreciate those efforts, and I look forward to learning and hearing more from you. Thanks.
Real quick, Trinity, did you, did you forget something about the Discovery Bowl? Oh, sorry, did I? Trinity, I just want to welcome you. Sorry, we just got out of a meeting. It was very somber and serious. So you helped me shift to the positives, things that are happening at Mission Hills, and welcome. As a student rep here on the dais, just know that the Board, we really look forward to hearing from your perspective, what's happening on your campus and learning more about clubs, activities, highlights, and just, just welcome. This will be hopefully a really positive experience for you, and just know that we truly do value your voice. And so we're here to listen, and we're here to really learn from your perspective and just really enjoy this year. And we just welcome again. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sydney Cork. I am a current senior at San Marcos High School, and I am this year's Student Board Representative. A little bit about me, I am in charge of RCP as well as Trinity, which is really, really cool. And yeah, I'm just going to go over what has been happening so far this year. Okay, I'm going to go over some events. So last weekend, we had homecoming, so I'm just going to go over all of the homecoming activities that occurred. So we had a spirit week that revolved around the theme Ancient Greece, and we had lots of students participate in that. Some of those spirit days were Olympic sports, PJ Day, Toga Thursday, and Class Colors. We also had a homecoming game, and that was on Friday against Fallbrook, and we crushed them. The score was fifty-five to six. Next, during halftime, we had a flash mob, so that's just like a big dance with a lot of ASB students, our four dance teams, color guard, and our cheer teams. On Saturday, October 5th, we held homecoming, and we had different activities, like a train, some food stations, arcade games, silent disco, Henna, just a ton of activities that assured every student had something that they wanted, like that they liked or something that they could enjoy at homecoming. Next is Senior Legacy Week, so this is actually this week. We're just trying to appreciate the seniors, and it included five different spirit days. On Monday, students got the opportunity to put up their handprints in the Student Union, which was really, really cool. I think my handprint is in the corner over there. Tuesday, we had an event called Senior Sunrise, so we all met up in the, on the field, and we had just fun hanging out with each other, and we had Chick-fil-A, which was really, really fun. Wednesday, we handed out some popsicles, and then this week just helped seniors feel really appreciated in their last year of high school. Okay, I'm going to go over some programs. So Knights United, our first meeting was on Tuesday, ten eight. This program is ran by our Equity and Diversity Director, Tejas Sobti, and in this meeting, they all go over different cultural topics such as cultural months of appreciation, and this just makes sure all groups on campus feel supported and honored in their cultures and backgrounds. So this first meeting was about Hispanic Heritage Month, and Tejas ran everybody through how to uplift and support students of Hispanic ethnicities, and this also discussed different advertising strategies to teach others about inclusivity. Okay, Link Crew. This program has a hundred and four leaders, and this program is dedicated to facilitating lessons and engaging freshmen in their first year of high school. So the Link Crew is a program that helps freshmen transition through their first year of high school, and freshman orientation was an event that freshmen could go to, get campus tours, bond with their Link Crew leaders, and learn about San Marcos High School. So during the first two days of orientation, students got to meet their, our ASB Director, Bonnie, and they got to play different games with the Link Crew leaders and learn more about more valuable life skills that are essential for high school. And then Knights Regiment. So Knights Regiment is our marching band and color guard, and they are preparing for the BOA SoCal Regional Championships, and that takes place on November 2nd. So our student body actually got to see this performance during their homecoming assembly this past weekend, and they also performed this weekend, and they placed first in their division, which is really, really cool. Next is sports. So our girls varsity volleyball team is doing really, really well right now. They have a record of nineteen wins and three losses. They just went to a tournament in Hawaii where they placed fifth out of forty schools, and they're ranked eleventh in California and third in San Diego. Okay, I'm just gonna put three sports on one slide. So golf, field hockey, and cross country all have a lot of new members joining their programs, and a lot of them are freshmen, so that's really, really exciting to see as these young athletes are excited to learn and grow through out their four years of high school. Okay, football. We have a record of four wins and one loss, Mission Hills. So yeah, our football players are working really, really hard, and we have really dedicated coaching staff, and we are excited to announce that they are ranked fifty-ninth in California. Okay, flag football. So this is the first year we have a flag football team. We are currently ranked eighty-third in California and eleventh in San Diego, and that is really, really exciting. We have a record of ten wins and two losses, so that's really, really great. I'm going to go over some clubs. So Club Rush happened from the twenty-third, from, to the twenty-seventh of September, and we have a hundred and twenty clubs on campus, and five thousand five hundred students signed up for clubs during that Club Rush week. So we have a lot of like participation in different extracurriculars, and I think that is really, really great. Okay, let's go to the next one. So I'm just going to highlight this club. This club is called Lunch Buddies. Their first meeting just occurred on ten-two, and this just helps students feel like connected on campus because this group, this club is dedicated to helping out students that otherwise might not connect with other social groups, and this club is dedicated in to making sure that nobody eats lunch alone. And that is all I have for today. Thank you so much for listening, and I look forward to giving out more presentations.
Thank you, Sydney.
Thank you, Sydney. I have to say, I went to college in Hawaii, and volleyball is no joke over there. So to come in fifth is pretty impressive.
Thank you. I'm so, I'm so impressed by both of you ladies, and some awesome photographs. I mean, I felt like they were professionals. Are those student taken? Oh, wow. They're really nice, you guys. Very nice.
And remember Ramos, he went, he graduated from San Marcos High School in the nineteen hundreds. So he's an alumni. So he's, you know, Mission Hills is kind of close to where he lives, but he's an alumni, so he'll say some nice things about San Marcos every once in a while.
We didn't have the Discovery Bowl. We had Tip the Cow Bowl.
Welcome. We really do value your voice and hearing your updates, and just, we are so excited to have you here and be up here with us. So thank you, Sydney and Trinity.
If you wish to address the Board, you may fill out a request form located in the alcove to the left of the double doors as you enter the boardroom. Please complete a white speaker form if the item you wish to speak about is on the agenda, and a blue speaker form if the item you wish to speak about is not on the agenda. Please give it to Susie. In accordance with Board Policy ninety-three twenty-three, public comments will be limited to twenty minutes per topic. Each speaker will be allowed a maximum of three minutes to speak, except for our union representatives who have five minutes. Per the Brown Act, members of the Board are very limited in their ability to respond to statements or questions made during public comment. Unless an item has been placed on the published agenda, there shall be no deliberation nor action taken. The Board may, one, acknowledge receipt of the information, report, and comment; two, refer to staff for further study; or, three, refer the matter to the next agenda. A recording is made of all open sessions of the Governing Board. Again, on behalf of the Board of Education, we thank you in advance for helping us conduct this meeting respectfully. Susie, do we have any speakers?
Yes, Azareli Espero. Noah Stingby.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. Thank you for having us tonight. We are here to talk about girls using young men's facilities, locker rooms and bathrooms in our schools, and boys using young ladies locker rooms and bathrooms in our schools. This is something that is not natural. This is something that's causing depression and anxiety, fear and confusion, and is causing a state of, a mental state of a lack of safety and lack of security in our students. I know this because I am a youth leader at Grace Church San Marcos here. We have several students that go to Mission Hills, that go to Woodland Park, San Marcos High, amongst other schools in the community. And we have received a lot of reports of these things that are happening in our schools, and we thank you for adding this matter as a topic of conversation to the agenda tonight. And I would like to ask you directly to make this something that you are willing to take action on, and not something that we're just going to have a conversation about and watch it go away. Because if we allow this to fade away, then we're going to be raising a generation of people that are going to be altered in their mentality, in their psychology, and in their identity in negative ways because we are not obeying natural law. So I would like to ask you again to be willing to take action on behalf of our kids' safety and of their mental health tonight. Thank you very much.
Paul Christensen?
Good evening. This is my first time at a Board meeting, so thank you for having me. I'm Paul Christensen. I live here in San Marcos. And I, I love San Marcos. I love everything about it. My wife and I moved here, oh, man, twelve years ago, I think. And we say, I don't play the lottery. My wife does every once in a while, where we say, if we won, ever won the billion dollars, we wouldn't even leave San Marcos. We'd stay right here. But I'm just, just concerned about the violence at schools. I'm sure you guys have heard the, the fights and the stabbing yesterday. One of the things that I wanted to bring up is that I get text messages from the school that my kid was late to class to, for tardy. Not that I don't care if he's tardy or she's tardy, but I get, I get informed of that, and that's great. That's fine. There was four, maybe five fights at school on Monday. I heard nothing from the school, zero from the school. I didn't get a text message. I didn't get an email. I get, what do I get? I get videos going around social media of four girl, I saw four girl fights. I didn't see the fifth one. I say four girls fighting at school. I don't know what is going on there. I'm not questioning what's going on, but I want to be, know, I, I think I should, as a, as a parent of the school, or have two kids in the high school, they should let us know who it is. I don't care about the names, but like, who's involved, what's happening, what they're doing about it. I have the, the, the behavior code here from San Marcos or from Mission Hills High School. I have the, the behavior code here from San Marcos or from Mission Hills High School. Yeah, I think they need to change the language in here. It says that your first offense, you may be suspended for five days. I think it should say will be suspended for five days. I think they need to change that language. And I also think they need to change that the second offense should be an automatic expulsion from the school. Because this is the first time that one of my kids, I have two in high school. I won't tell you which one it was. I asked them, are you afraid to go to? She's like, yeah. I just said who it was. She said, yeah, I'm, yeah. She's like, I'm afraid sometimes at school. I'm afraid if I look at somebody wrong, say something wrong, that I could get beat up at school. And I was like, I was blown away. I was like shocked that my daughter would say that she's afraid to go to school. So, three minutes, fifteen, fifteen seconds. So, so, and I also think the stabbing yesterday, and I'm not, I'm not saying who, but I would, I would venture to say that it was a gang member. There's two gangs in San Marcos, Varios San Marcos and the South Los. And I think if you're a known gang member that is at one of the high schools, should be automatically expelled from school.
Chelsea Christiansen.
I'm with him. But I actually came to talk about those things. And I'm actually, these girls, I'm so glad they got up and said some positive things that are going on in school because I feel a little defeated after the last few days. I'm a very concerned parent about the things that are going on in the high school currently. And I have personally seen five fights on these accounts at Mission Hills that my kids are, I know these are illegal contraband accounts. They're gonna shut it down at some point. Some other kid will open another account where they post all the fights. I'm sure it will happen. I've seen five that happened at the school this week. Very concerned about it. It is not okay for these kids to be acting out violently against other kids, period. It is not okay. I came here as a really concerned parent. I'm very concerned about these things, and I think that we need to, I wanna know what you guys are gonna do about it. I have sympathy for these kids who are doing kid things and overwhelmed by emotions and make bad decisions. And I have tons of sympathy for that. I have sympathy for these kids who are in bad homes and bad environments and aren't have supportive homes. But I also have sympathy for the kids who are just going to school and just trying to go about their day. They should not be feel threatened or nervous or concerned in any way, shape, or form about their physical presence being on campus. So I just came here tonight, what you guys are gonna do, and I have a couple suggestions from just what I've observed. And the first is better communication. I do believe that we should be notified about these fights. I don't wanna see it coming for my kids because the kids all know about it. It's not a secret. The school's not hiding anything. The kids all know what goes on. They come home, tell us, show us videos of these things that are going on. It's not funny. It's just period not funny. I know the kids think it's funny and exciting when these things happen. It's not funny. Catastrophic things could happen as a result of fights. There's a rumor going around that someone's in a coma as a result of fight. I don't know if it's true or not, but that's not a good rumor. I think the school should be shutting that down. These kids should be scared of the policy when it comes to starting a fight. I think it should pretty much be a zero tolerance policy. If you start a fight, you're out. It's not fair. It's not for other kids. And also, the consequences, like I said, can be catastrophic. And the third thing I would suggest is to offer some kind of counseling or classes around violence and/or relationships. From my understanding, according to my kids from the things they've heard, a lot of these fights were started around relationships, ending, betrayal, rejection, et cetera, et cetera. And maybe offer these kids classes on how to deal with these emotions and feelings. These are not new. These are teenage things, they're overwhelmed by emotion. But maybe give these kids an opportunity to have some guidance, to resolve these situations without resorting to violence. I think it's ridiculous to see girls going after other girls fighting over a subpar boy. Thank you. Nothing makes me more angry, but thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just had a few things that I wanted to say. Tonight, I'd like to ask Dr. Campbell to share an update on yesterday's incident for everybody. I would like to say a few things before we hear from Dr. Campbell. And I would like to share my thoughts as a parent of a Mission Hills student. Sitting here in front of you, I want you to know the worry, the fear, and the uncertainty of yesterday's lockdown events. It was, I was right there with you. I was a very scary moment as a parent. I also want to share that I know our district remains dedicated to the safety and the security of our students, staff, and campuses. During the frightening experience, I want to express my heartfelt gratitude for the way that our team handled the situation. Our communication and crisis response went smoothly. With staff following all safety protocols and ensuring that our students on campus during the lockdown were kept safe, the injured student received prompt medical attention, and I'm relieved to share that help was quickly on the scene. I also want to extend my sincere appreciation to our law enforcement partners for their swift action at apprehending the individual responsible. We are truly grateful for your support of our community. As a parent and board member, there's no doubt that we need more supports on our campuses. Additional safety upgrades take time and resources to implement, and I am committed to doing whatever it takes to make that happen. I want to reassure our parents that our team is well-prepared in crisis incident management. A team responded swiftly and thoughtfully with the necessary supports of our students and staff today, and will continue to provide that for the rest of the week. I also want to acknowledge and thank our students' resilience. As things flew through the interweb and all over Facebook, our students remained diligent and fact-finding. And I just am grateful to them. As always, it's always inspiring to see how adult our students can be sometimes when we can't. Again, I also want, I also feel the emotions that many of you did from the moment we got the lockdown texts from Parents Square until my daughter walked in the door where I just hugged her until she said, okay, get off me, Mom, seriously. It's, as a board member, I assure, I assure you that we will do everything we can to learn and review and improve. Dr. Campbell, sorry.
Thank you, Member Chamberlain, for your comments and for your emotion and for your vulnerability. And I am the parent of a high schooler in this district myself. So I deeply empathize with the fear and uncertainty that the incidents of violence can create within our school community. I am also one who is responsible for monitoring our classrooms and our campuses. And I am equally determined to ensure that our safety practices and protocols are as tight as they can be. While our, as you said, our emergency response protocols were smoothly executed, you should know, and our community should know, that our district's EOC, which is our emergency response, our Emergency Operations Command, is going to be fully debriefing the incident so that we can see if there, if and where there were gaps and tighten anything as possible. So I was on the Mission Hills campus yesterday, and I was on campus again today. So I will provide you with a brief update on what we factually know. The incident was a targeted act in which one student stabbed another student. The situation unfolded very quickly, fifteen-ish seconds. Thanks to the quick and decisive actions of the Mission Hills staff and law enforcement, the entire sequence from the moment of the incident occurring to the moment of arrest took less than twenty minutes. Because the incident occurred during dismissal, most students had already left the campus. Our campus supervisors alongside administration executed our safety protocols effectively, which led to a swift lockdown of the school. This allowed for an efficient search and an off-campus apprehension of the suspect. The student has been arrested and is currently in the custody of law enforcement. The student who is the victim of the act is currently receiving medical care and is expected to make a full recovery. Crisis teams were on-site today to support both students and staff as we recognize their needs for both. And they will remain available for the rest of the week as we continue to address the emotional needs. While only four students utilized these services today, we anticipate that there may be more in the coming week as the reality of what has occurred has set in. Today, on the campus, the atmosphere was subdued, understandably so. And although the individual who was responsible for this act was not on campus, has been apprehended, we did have additional law enforcement that was on campus. And I want to say a special thank you to our law enforcement officers, one, for being there so quickly, and two, for being there today for our students and staff members. It was greatly, greatly appreciated. I also want to extend my deepest gratitude to the Mission Hills staff. It is humbling and heartbreaking and also invigorating to see a staff that is so dedicated to their students and to each other. This was a staff that came together incredibly quickly. And after school, after everything had happened, knowing that they were having their own sense of trauma, the conversation was, what are we doing to pull together the supports for our students in the morning? It was, it was an amazing sight to see. So I have to say that out loud and to say thank you to the administrators, the counseling staff, the social workers, the campus supervisors who were involved in the debrief yesterday. While San Marcos has some of the strongest safety protocols and practices in place, I do think it is important for us to say that. We have dedicated SROs. We have diamond safety-trained staff on every campus, the first and only in the county. I also recognize that responding to incidents like this raises deeper concerns with our board and with our community. There are large concerns overall about our school environments and the overall safety of our children. As a mother, as an educator, it is our top priority. Ms. Chamberlain, I hear your concerns. I see your concerns. I feel your concerns. To our board, I hear your concerns. I feel your concerns. To our community, I hear your concerns. And I wholeheartedly agree that the conversations about school safety and our community's well-being are crucial. Dr. Johnson and I are actively working on organizing a meeting in the upcoming weeks to discuss these important issues with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell.
Reports by board members. Does anyone have anything they would like to report?
I do. I wanted to speak on that because I too am a mom of a junior at San Marcos High School. And, you know, everyone kind of thinks out there that, you know, we, as board members, we're getting information like the second it happens. I actually found out on social media first as well. I mean, there's a, you know, chain of events that happens, and it's scary as a parent. I don't have the words, but I know this is, we all know how safety is important to all. Each one of us has a child on our campuses. So we know how important safety is when we put our kids in and what we need to be doing. It's a learning exercise for all of us. There's, things happen. We think we, I never go in thinking we have it a hundred percent because I also know there's no silver bullet for anything. I shouldn't say that. But, you know, there's no perfect answer for anything. But when things like this happen, we do have to review everything. And Chelsea, I wanna, I wanna commend you for understanding. I'm a firm believer in preventing this from ever happening. And what we do need to do for our kids to, you know, give them some supports. And that's why that invisible student, what you guys are talking about, the Lunch Buddies, all of those things come into, you know, preventing this from happening, making sure that our kids are not feeling that their only course of action is to hurt someone else, especially at school. So I know the community, I mean, I'm a community member. So I know as a community member, as a parent, and furthermore, as a board member, the incredible importance of us looking at our safety protocols. And I'm very proud of the safety protocols we have in place, but I'm not, like, I don't have an ego to think that that's the only thing we should be doing. We can't be doing more. And I appreciate Dr. Tiffany and Dr. Johnson for making sure that we schedule something coming so we can review this even more. I also appreciate the community because, you know, for example, coming to us with ideas. I mean, this, this is not just a school issue. This is not just a parent issue. This is not a community, this is an issue for all of us. This is a societal issue. And for us to have a solution or even a company close to a solution, it will take all of us working together to find, to find something for our kids. So I appreciate your collaboration. I appreciate you taking the time out to come speak to us. I appreciate everyone that reaches out to us and sends us an email. And, you know, I wanna continue forth with this collaborative, you know, feeling and action. And I want everyone to realize that it's not just important to one, it's important to all, and it's important for all. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell, for taking the time to just update us and let us know the facts and just to let us all know that we are going to be convening and working on our, just debriefing and how we can make this, learn from this. I don't know, I don't want to even say make this better because it's not about making it better. It's really about what we're doing for creating a climate and culture in our community where all kids feel safe and where all kids feel welcome. And kids that are invisible are not made to feel invisible. They're made to be seen and heard and valued and cared for. So this is my thirty-fourth year in education. I've been a teacher. I've been an assistant principal. That's like a one-way ticket to heaven. Being, my assistant principal's no bad job, or fast pass, right? I've been a principal, director of curriculum. I'm back in the classroom. I love being a teacher. But the concerns that have been brought to us in the last twenty-four hours have been alarming. And I'll just leave it there. But I just, I have full faith and confidence in your leadership, Dr. Campbell and Cabinet and Dr. Johnson, and working with our community to address the issues that occurred yesterday and allowing us to come together for... Thank you. Thank you. And thank you, Member Chamberlain, for speaking as a parent. And Member Maude, it's, your voice is heard and valued. And just know that, you know, safety is something that's near and dear to me. Hurt kids hurt others. And I, that's, I know it's, it's, but it's the truth. And we don't want our, any of our kids hurting in any way. And so it's so important that we have these discussions. Thank you. Seven-point-oh Action Agenda. For action items seven-point-one through seven-point-four, the governing board will be acting as the legislative body of community facilities, District numbers seventeen and nineteen of the San Marcos Unified School District. Agenda Item seven-point-one, Approval of Form of School Facilities Funding Agreement between San Marcos Unified School District and North City Community Partners, and Authorization for School District Officers to Execute and Deliver Final Agreement.
This is the first of three steps to form another new CFD, CFD number seventeen. This is for the North City Project. This is being built by Shea Homes. It's located in the city of San Marcos at the corner of Discovery Street and South Twin Oaks Valley Road. Initially, the CFD will include four-hundred-and-eighty residential units ranging from thirteen-hundred to twenty-six-hundred square feet and priced from five-hundred-and-ninety-thousand to nine-hundred-and-ninety-thousand. CFD number seventeen is unique because there is a future annexation area identified, expected to become part of the CFD in the future as Shea Homes continues its development process. expected to become part of the CFD in the future as Shea Homes continues its development process. The future annexation could increase the unit counts to over 600. CFD 17 will finance a mitigation payment of 132% of the district's Level 1 developer fees and is estimated to generate $5.6 million in school, in funds for school facilities. Tonight is the first of three board meetings to consider the funding agreement and the resolution of intention items for this new CFD formation. And our financial advisor, Rachel, is here from Feldman if the board has any questions.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the proposed funding agreement?
I move to approve the form, move the form of School Facilities Funding Agreement between San Marcos Unified School District and the North City Community Partners LLC, and authorization for School District Officers to execute and deliver the final agreement.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Member Martine. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Initial actions for formation of Proposed Community Facilities District Number 17 of the San Marcos Unified School District.
Based on the funding agreement just approved by the board, the owner of the property within the territory of proposed CFD Number 17 has submitted a petition requesting the board take action for the formation of the CFD, the authorization of special taxes, actions to incur bonded indebtedness, and related matters. Resolution Numbers 12, 13, 14, and 15 are presented to the board this evening for action to proceed with CFD 17 consistent with that request. District staff and consultants recommend that the board take action to adopt Resolutions 12, 13, 14, and 15.
Do I have a motion for the adoption of Resolutions 12, 13, 14, and 15?
I move for the adoption of Resolutions 12, 13, 14, and 15.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Member Chamberlain to adopt Resolutions 12, 13, 14, and 15 as presented. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, motion carries. The governing board will now address matters related to the Community Facilities District Number 19 of the San Marcos Unified School District. For Agenda Items 7.3 and 7.4, the governing board will be acting as the legislative body of Community Facilities District Number 19. Agenda Item Number 7.3 conducts second reading of Ordinance Number 1-2425, Ordinance of Community Facilities District Number 19 of the San Marcos Unified School District, authorizing the levy of a special tax within Community Facilities District Number 19.
The board previously took the first two steps for this proposed CFD formation on August 8th and September 12th. Tonight is the last of three board meetings to approve the special tax ordinance. As a reminder, this project is referred to as The Row and is being built by Lennar Homes. It's in the city of San Marcos and near the corner of West San Marcos Boulevard and South Las Poses Road and includes 202 condominiums.
Do I have a motion to present second reading, the ordinance by title only?
I'll make the motion.
I, I move the ordinance number, number one, number 1-24-25 to be presented by the reading of title only and that the clerk forego the reading of the entire ordinance.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Member Martine. Move by Member Ahmad, second by Member Martine, to present the second reading of the ordinance by title only. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, motion carries.
The title. The title of Ordinance Number 01-2425 reads as follows. Ordinance of Community Facilities District Number 19 of San Marcos Unified School District, authorizing the levy of a special tax within Community Facilities District Number 19.
Agenda Item Number 7.4, Adoption of Ordinance Number 1-2425, Ordinance of Community Facilities District Number 19 of the San Marcos Unified School District, authorizing the levy of a special tax within Community Facilities District Number 19.
District staff and legal counsel recommend that the governing board take action to adopt Ordinance Number 01-2425 for the reasons previously discussed.
Do I have a motion for the adoption of Ordinance Number 1-2425?
I move for adoption of Ordinance Number 1-2425.
Second.
Move by Member Ahmad, second by Member Chamberlain. We will now take a roll call vote. Board Member Sarah Ahmad, please say your vote.
Aye.
Board Member Jamie Chamberlain, please say your vote.
Aye.
Board Member Andres Martín, please say your vote.
Aye.
And Carlos Sioa, aye, also say aye. Total of four ayes, zero nos. Motion carries. The matter related to CFD Number 19 and Number, excuse me, Number 17, Number 19 are now complete for this meeting of the governing board. The governing board will no longer be acting as the legislative body of CFD Number 17 and Number 19 for the remaining items of the agenda. Public hearing, Charter Petition Renewal for Pivot Charter School. Dr. Campbell?
On September 24th, 2024, the district received a petition from Pivot Charter School to renew its charter with the San Marcos Unified School District. The charter expires on June 30th, 2025, and the governing board must either grant or deny the request to renew the charter within 90 days from the receipt of the petition. In August, Executive Director Gaskin presented an update on Pivot. And tonight, for ED Code 47605, we will hold a public hearing to determine the level of support for the petition. Staff will review the petition in the upcoming months and will present information and a recommendation to the board in December.
This public hearing is now open. Susie, is there anyone who wishes to speak?
Yes. Can we have Craig Hobart up?
Good evening, board. You didn't tell me I was going to go first. Little board members, president, and the board members that I know. My name is Craig Hobart. I've been a San Marcos resident now for over 20 years. More than half of that time, I've represented the school I'm most proud of, Pivot Charter School. But the first thing I wanted to say is, this is the third time I've been here always asking you for something, to approve our school. So I'm going to start with, thank you. Thank you for what you do, for volunteering. Both of my students, both of my kids have graduated from San Marcos High School since the time that I've been working at Pivot. Never once in their four years of high school did they say, Dad, could we come to your school? It's never happened. The school that I'm most proud of, they have zero interest in, and I'm just going to be super honest, they wouldn't do well. I'll tell you more about that in a second. But I will first tell you, without bragging that much, my daughter graduated from here and got into a UC school. She graduated last April early and is just waiting to get into grad school. And that's because of what she learned at San Marcos High. My son is currently a freshman at the School of Mines in Golden, Colorado. And that's almost 100% because of the robotics program that is happening at San Marcos High School. He loved it, and it decided his future. We don't do that at Pivot. Most people just don't understand what a charter school is. But tonight, I want at least most of you to walk away knowing this one thing, maybe two. There are no two charter schools that are like. We are not similar to any other charter schools, just as no other charter schools are similar to themselves. Each one is different. But what I can tell you is Pivot Charter School is here for one specific reason. They're here to give students an alternative. For the students, like these two young ladies, who found their jam in high school. They're here on their own time, talking to you. There's a whole bunch of people at your school who are not like you. Okay? They haven't found their rhythm. They haven't found their beat. And about 80 of them have come to Pivot Charter School, where they have found something incredibly different. You might notice there's a lot of blue shirts out there. I want you to think about something for a second. When you were in high school, would you come out on a Thursday night? Yes. Oh, my gosh, already? Okay. Look out into the audience and tell me, would you have done that in high school? Would you have come back to represent your school? We have alumni, we have current enrollments, and dozens of parents. Thank you very much.
Gina Huskell. Gina?
Thank you.
I can't touch what he just said. So all I'm going to say is that I'm just very, very proud of all the families and the students who are here. And, and again, we are incredibly grateful to San Marcos Unified. This is my 38th year in education. And you are absolutely right. What you're dealing with right now is a societal problem, and it breaks my heart. We deal with similar things. It's just we're a little tiny little microcosm. So my heart goes out to this community of which we are a very active, strong member. We're just smaller. But you're right, it is a societal issue. So we're here if there's anything we can do. And I'm sorry what you're going through. It's very difficult. But these guys, very, very proud of them, very excited to be here. They're all just going to speak a little bit of their heart so that maybe you can picture a little bit more about what Pivot is, which is way better than my presentation. So I'm just going to cede my time to them.
Jessica Asario.
Good evening, board. I just wanted to come here to be, represent Pivot Charter School. And a little bit about Pivot Charter School that I love is their communication. At Pivot Charter School, you get your own educational coordinator, which you could basically go to for anything. So if you have a problem with like schoolwork or just in home in general, like say you can't get schoolwork done, you go to them. And even so, if they can't help you with anything, then they can point you towards the same direction or point you towards the correct direction. And, yeah, that's just kind of one thing I really like about Pivot is just the communication and just going, sometimes going onsite when they have like, just activities to do, their schedule, their ASB club as well. I was a part of their ASB club last year, and it was pretty fun as well. And, yeah, that's it for, thank you.
Rendan Chen.
Good evening, board. My name is Rendan Chen. I'm an alumni at Pivot Charter School. I graduated in 2022. And I would just like to say that Pivot Charter School has been a wonderful place to be for my high school years. To the educational coordinators who are always there for you, if you needed help on any work that you needed done, they would always either help you out or they would point you in the correct direction to go to. We also have excellent counselors who are always there for our students. Sometimes you can even go to them for problems you are facing outside of school, and they would always be a pleasure to help you out. Pivot is also a really closed-knit community, so everyone knows each other. And it's really easy to socialize and make new friends because everyone you see in our campus is everyone that you will meet for the year in our campus, for the most part. And it's really easy to get conversations going, knowing, knowing this. And I feel like that is wonderful for a lot of students who feel closed in. And so a lot of students can reach out, socialize, and be represented. So thank you, board, tonight. Thank you. Have a wonderful night.
Julianne Cochran.
Good evening, board. Thank you so much for having us here. We really appreciate you taking time out of your lives and your children to be with us. My name is Julianne. I'm the Curriculum Coordinator for Pivot Charter School, and this is my eighth year working with Pivot. I could tell you a million wonderful things about Pivot, but I'll keep it very short and tell you that I work with a team of 11 educators. They are all credentialed teachers, and their work is solely to support our students. They do not have to teach anything, but they get to. They get to tutor our students one-on-one. Anytime a student needs help, they grade their assignments and they check for academic integrity. And they make sure they give feedback that gives our students the most support that they possibly can. I'm sorry. I get really emotional talking about it. Each of these teachers is crucial to our students' success by giving them that individualized attention that they really need. And those students come to us because they need that, and they need it in a different way. So thank you for listening to us and thank you for your support.
Isabella. Lakoka.
Hello, my name is Isabella Lakop. I'm a student at Pivot Charter. I've been at Pivot Charter since I was in seventh grade. I'm now in 11. When I first came here, my sibling was in their 11th grade year. They graduated two years ago. When I first met my best friend, I was in ninth grade. She's in 10, or she graduated last year. I have been fortunate enough to see them walk into their new lives with the lessons learned at Pivot. I couldn't be more proud, proud of them. Walking into Pivot always feels so welcoming because of the community. And after countless years of trying to find where I belong, I finally found my place. Pivot has helped me both academically and emotionally. From the school counselors to my educational coordinator, Pivot has been an amazing experience. The counselors here have helped me with personal issues I had been struggling with, and everyone there would always check in on me. Academically wise, I was failing before I started at Pivot. When, sorry. When everything went on in COVID, Pivot knew what to do. And switching to this school was an amazing decision that I and my parents helped me make. I am now in my junior year with the decision to go into education myself. And I couldn't have made this choice without my educational coordinator, Ms. Gale, and the college counselor, Mr. Luis. They have both inspired me to contribute to the educational field and continue on this bright path. The teachers here have all empowered me to be the best version of myself. I also enjoy the activities we have here at Pivot. I love doing ASB. I love helping plan fun community events. I love when we all get to do community service activities. And most of all, I love it here at Pivot. I love living here at Pivot. Thank you for your time.
Lauren Lamontahue? I don't know if I said that right.
Evening, Board. My name is Lauren, and I have a daughter who is in her second year at Pivot. I originally, last, in her seventh grade, I withdrew her from Avista Middle School because she was denied an IEP two times. And I withdrew her and enrolled her in Pivot. I have seen my daughter grow in ways I didn't think that was even possible. Socially, educationally. And I'm sorry, I'm getting, I'm trying not to get teary-eyed. The staff and the educational coordinators were amazing in illustrating just support for my daughter, support for her education, support for her goals. I had my daughter hiding behind air conditioners in her previous school, texting me, wondering when I was going to come pick her up. My daughter gets up every day and goes to school now, and with no fight. So I'm very grateful.
Monica Suarez.
Good evening, my name is Monica. Board, I wanted to thank you for this opportunity to speak on behalf of Pivot. My daughter is in sixth grade. She started there in fourth. She attends the school for many reasons that would take me beyond this evening. But I could go on, but mainly, she has significant anxiety. Our neighborhood public school, where a couple of her friends still go, was not an environment where she could thrive. We were so grateful when we found Pivot. We didn't even know that a public school like this existed until we needed to know. And we're so grateful. Her teachers know her, really know her. They appreciate her and they let her know that they do. She can ask questions. My daughters always cared about her work, but she's developed even more independence and a positive sense of accountability about her work because of the relationship she has with her teachers at Pivot. They know her progress, and they know where she is in her classes. And she knows that they know, and that's really important. And for a public school with an online curriculum, year after year, I guess my, my third fall here, I've been amazed at how visible her teachers are and how much one-on-one time she gets here. Not all kids need this. I think all would benefit, but not all kids need it. This is a game changer for my daughter. These personal connections with teachers, she matters to them, and she has a place here. Since we've been at Pivot, I've seen her level of learning return, and it shows. At the beginning of this year, she tested above-grade level in her reading diagnostic, which is how she used to test before the experiences that led her to Pivot. So it's taken a couple of years, and you know. She has the flexibility to work with content and explore and deep dive in a way that she was not able to at her traditional public school. She can take breaks. My daughter's a crocheter. She's starting her own business, and crocheting helps her learn. So she can do this while she listens to her curriculum and her videos and thinks about what she wants to write in her report, helps her brainstorm. And these are small things, but they mean so much. And she can do these things that help her learn here. And as a parent who's not an educator, I get so much support, meaningful support that helps me facilitate my daughter's learning at home. Pivot is our learning community. It's our neighborhood school. My daughter's learning here. I see it, it's working, and we're very grateful. Thank you.
Naomi Lull.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. I really appreciate your time. I am a Pivot alumni, and I am very proud to be. When I was younger, I faced the challenges of a clinical ADHD diagnosis, which significantly impacted my journey through elementary and middle school. Focus was elusive, and I often found myself trailing behind in my studies. My raised hand was frequently overlooked in public school, leaving many of my questions unanswered. This experience fostered a profound self-doubt regarding my ability to learn and comprehend concepts that others seem to grasp with ease. After grappling with academic struggles and an undeserved reputation as a space cadet, my parents made the decision to homeschool me. Initially, I was enrolled with another educational organization, but it just couldn't compare to Pivot. Then came my enrollment in Pivot. It was here that I discovered a safe haven, an environment where asking questions was not just welcomed, but encouraged. This close-knit community instilled in me the confidence to connect with my peers, forge friendships, and pursue educational excellence without reservation. The dedicated staff at Pivot made it their mission to help me overcome my doubts and achieve my goals. Their support, reliability, and wisdom have left me with an indelible mark on my life. Today, I am proud to be a physician's assistant trainee at UCSD Medical School. And I've recently been accepted into their RN program. My aspirations continue to soar as I aim for academic excellence, seeking both a PhD and a master's degree, with the ultimate goal of becoming a pediatric oncologist. The personal aspects of staff to students go as far as life and death, trust, and care. During my educational journey at Pivot, I underwent surgery. As I prepared for the surgery, that of which I only had a forty-five percent chance of living, the teachers and all of the students put together a card for me and brought flowers to my home. Knowing that I had prayers and support even from my fellow peers and especially from staff made me feel so loved and so safe. So I wanted to thank the close-knit Pivot family for the cherished memories and love that will stay with me forever, and thank you for teaching me to spread that love as well. Thank you.
Jim Lewis.
Wow, I'm Jim Lewis. Good evening, Board members. Would you like me to continue? I'm Jim Lewis, and my day job, I'm a city manager. And I have the privilege of working with a board like you. Let me first share how great it is to hear a city works so well at the school district in times of crisis. I'm, my heart warms for that, and I can see your passion and your care for your kids. How neat for your city and your school district. Thanks for your service. I'm also, not in my day job, founder of Pivot Charter School fifteen years ago and president of the board. And I'm humbled that you allow us to serve and love your kids. We love them. And students, man, you are speaking awesome tonight. You represent us so well, and I'm so proud as your, your chairman. And we at Pivot consider ourselves true partners with your district. We have the same goal of providing our community students the best in education for each individual scholar. And we're so pleased that you allow us to provide another option for student success and coming alongside you to assure bright futures for the kids in this area. Let me assure you as board chairman that we ensure accountability. We are transparent. We look closely at our records, and we hold our staff accountable. I promise you that we're a school you can be proud of and that you can trust. We have strong communication between our students, staff, parents, and our faculty. That's so important, as you have talked about. And our board ensures that we have strong communication. We have a passion for what we do for our students, as you can see. When something in their last school wasn't working, our family embraces them, and we pivot their future. And you can see the bright futures tonight of our students. I want to share a little bit quickly about our board. We're all volunteers, just like you. And our board is made up of retired superintendents, city managers, public sector professionals, and successful business people. We all care. Dr. Halverson's a retired superintendent in the audience this evening, and I know he serves students with the same care and passion you do. Our board has had cohesion for over a decade. We've had the same board, and we all are committed, just like you. So as you see, our families and students love their program and care about it so much. You're always welcome to visit us at our campus here in San Marcos. We'd love that. We want to continue to serve this community by inspiring and pivoting student futures that we have for fourteen years. Thank you for this opportunity, and students, I'm so proud of you.
Maria Cervantes.
Buenas noches.
Buenas noches.
Este, necesito mi hija traducirme o me entender?
Lo puedes decir en español.
En español, okay. Buenas noches. Este, mi nombre es María Cervantes, y este tengo un hijo que está en quinto. Este, está ahí desde primer grado. Y he visto un avance muy positivo en él. Le encanta asistir a la escuela, está muy contento. Tengo otro hijo que está en primero también en Pivot. Y mi hijo que se graduó hace dos años, que está en el programa para ser bombero. Y estoy muy agradecida tener Pivot porque hay mucha comunicación con los maestros, conmigo. Y cualquier ayuda y mucho apoyo para ellos. Y este, hay muchas cosas que puedo decir, pero solo tengo poco tiempo. Pero este, académicamente les ha ayudado mucho. Tienen una meta cada uno. Y este, también quiero decir que no solamente es el trabajo de los maestros, porque cada uno de ellos son muy buenos ayudando. También es trabajo mío de mi esposo, de mi familia, que estamos apoyando. Y todos los maestros son mis favoritos. Y estoy muy agradecida con, con la escuela como ha ayudado a mi hijo que tiene una IP. Le ha ayudado mucho en su habla, y cualquier pregunta aunque tú, que yo tenga, o mis hijos preguntan, y siempre hay una respuesta. Y mucho respeto también ahí entre ellos. Muchas gracias.
Gracias a usted por compartir su experiencia con TV.
We are actually at our twenty-minute time limit.
Acknowledge that there were more speakers.
This public hearing is now closed. We're going to take a five-minute break and resume in five minutes. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Yeah, go for it, please.
You didn't offer it in person.
All right, seven point six. Student expulsion case number one dash twenty four twenty five. Number two dash twenty four twenty five. Number three dash twenty four twenty five and number four dash twenty four twenty five. Do I have a motion to approve student expulsion case? Number one dash twenty four twenty five, number two dash twenty four twenty five, number three dash twenty four twenty five and number four dash twenty four twenty five. As recommended by staff.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Moved by member Chamberlain, second by member Ahmad. All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed, motion carries. Eight point O consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda for discussion purposes?
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Moved by member Ahmad, second by member Chamberlain to approve the consent agenda for discussion purposes. Is there any discussion? Moved by member Ahmad, second by member Chamberlain. Board members in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Nine point O information agenda. AB twelve sixty six, Dr. Campbell?
Okay, everyone. And so. Good. Okay. So we have two items that we'll talk about in the information agenda. I will start with first nine point one, AB twelve sixty six, which will be an update for you. And so AB twelve sixty six is also known as the School Success and Opportunity Act. It was enacted in California in twenty fourteen and codified in ed code two two one point five F. The School Success and Opportunity Act allows transgender students to participate in sex segregated, sex segregated school programs and activities, including athletic teams and competitions. And also to use facilities that are consistent with their gender identity.
I have a question here, if you mind. My question here is, I know and like in professional sports, there's some guidelines of when is, do we have similar guidelines? Or is it just when they identify? I mean, for example, the professional sports, you're supposed to be on some sort of treatment.
This is for California schools. It is your gender identification.
That's it.
So that's it. Yes. And so the ed code itself states that a pupil shall be permitted to participate in sex segregated school programs and activities, including athletic teams and competitions and use facilities consistent with his or her gender identity, irrespective of the gender listed on the pupil's records. So that's the, that's that answer to that question.
Okay. And these, these are set at the state level?
These are set at the state level. Yes, this is education code.
Okay.
So it was an assembly bill in twenty fourteen and then it became codified in ed code.
Okay, so our state legislators and assemblymen.
Correct.
Okay.
And so, and there have been, there's been a lot of information that has been put out on twelve sixty six in the, in the decade that it has been around. And so I've just kind of put together some legal guidelines and best practices that are from the California Department of Education, as well as the California School Boards Association and legal guidelines. So a school can maintain separate restrooms and locker room facilities for male and female students. However, students shall have access to the restroom and locker room that corresponds to their gender identity asserted at school. If there is a reason or a request for increased privacy and safety, regardless of the reason, any student, and I do want to highlight that is any student, not just a transgender student. Any student can be provided with access to a reasonable alternative locker room. This would include use of a private area in the public area of the locker room, like a nearby restroom stall. And there could be a separate changing schedule. And there could also be use of a nearby private area such as a nearby restroom or health office restroom. And the important part of this, per law, is that schools cannot require a transgender student to use those alternatives. They can be made available, but a student cannot be coerced to or required to. And, and part of the reason for that is requiring a transgender student to be singled out by using separate facilities is a denial of equal access that is actually against both California and federal law. But it can also violate the student's right to privacy by disclosing the student's transgender status or causing others to question why the student is being treated differently. So the practices for San Marcos Unified itself. Number one, we do follow state and federal laws that are, that are related to gender and gender identity. And we do look to, to practice, implement best practices from state and legal experts. Our number one goal, which we have already talked about and we will continue to talk about, is to prioritize the safety and well being of all of our students while also protecting student privacy and adhering to our non discrimination laws. And our locker rooms in general and our restrooms in general. We have protocols across our campuses to ensure appropriate supervision and student behavior norms. In our locker rooms, particularly in our middle school locker rooms, but in all of our locker rooms, quick changes are the expectation. When I say quick changes, between two and four minutes is the practice. And coaches are pushing kids out if you are loitering in locker rooms. So no loiter, no loitering in locker rooms. And then consistent monitoring of restrooms as well, get in and get out. That is the, that is the practice. Also, what is the, it is the policy of what we expect. Administrators do work with our students who request alternate locations for increased privacy. That is any student that is requesting an alternate location. Our administrators will work with their students and their families. All of our sites have gender neutral restrooms available. And then we continue to do professional learning, re-safen it regarding safe and inclusive schools at all campuses. Safe and inclusive schools relates to best practices in supporting LGBTQ plus students. We have both, all of our schools have all received professional learning and we continue to have coaching every year on this piece. It is called out in our LCAP. It is a high priority for us. I am happy to answer any questions from the board on AB twelve sixty six before moving to our next topic.
I just want to clarify that any student, so a student that is not transgender, that feels uncomfortable in the bathroom, can go to a private place and we will make that available for them.
That is absolutely correct.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Having been a principal, when this became a law in the state, it was definitely a curve in educating not only our students but our families and our communities. So I'm glad that we're revisiting this. And, and so thank you for this presentation. Nine point two revisions to existing governing board policies. Board policy oh four two zero point four one charter school oversight. Five one one three absences and excuses. Five one four five point six parent guardian notifications. Six thousand concepts and roles and six one seven seven summer learning programs. Dr. Campbell?
Thank you. Most of these updates are technical updates. However, because there are so many of them, I put them on a chart for you so that you can track them a little easier. So the first is BP zero four two zero point four one, that's charter school oversight. It clarifies a couple of things. The superintendent can designate someone to attend charter school governing board meetings. That's neat. Board approval is required for the charter to contract for administrative or other services. And the language has been changed. It used to be a separate language where it's, where it talked about charter school expansion. It has now been clarified that any type of change to the charter, including an expansion, is considered a material revision of the charter. So this is basically a definition change. BP fifty one thirteen is absences and excuses. So we are updating the current SBA, CSBA language. It adds specifically, it's adding because there is law around absence that is due to work in the entertainment industry can be considered and is considered an excused absence. And the other part of that update is that teachers must provide identical or equivalent assignments and test when a student has an excused absence. Third, parent guardian notification, that is BP five one four five point six. Very brief clarification that a parent guardian signature acknowledging receipt of the annual notification is not required. Although our practice as a district is that we be required digital signatures.
What do you mean, what is the annual notification specific?
Every year you get a packet of items that are sent to you about all types of things. It is an annual notification packet that is sent to all families. So when you do your, when you do your registration and you're clicking all the boxes, that's the annual notification.
So I make sure that was it?
Kind of like the app, kind of like the Apple agreement, just click away.
Click away, click away. And we have your firstborn child, you did not.
Dr. Campbell, what, what are allied services? I've never, our allied industry?
Health industry. Medical field, I don't think we have very many students that are doing it. This is literally the language of the law of entertainment industry or allied industry.
I like how they equated.
Do, maybe Doogie Howser, maybe Doogie Howser. I think it's really for us, it's the entertainment industry. We actually do have quite a few students who are in the entertainment industry. Ready for next one? We're almost done. BP six thousand concepts and roles. It is, it is updating to current CSBA language to implement and incorporate new state guidance. So making sure that our concepts and roles really does call out concepts of equity and inclusion. It adds the importance of the school, parent guardian, community and district collaboration to support innovative programs and practices that promote student engagement, growth, understanding, achievement and career exploration. That's our strategic promise. And lastly, summer learning BP sixty one seventy seven. There are two new laws that are related to this, so we are updating our policy. AB seven twenty three and AB three seven three. It adds requirements all related to the ELOP or Extended Learning Opportunities Program that has been operating for the last couple of years from the state. So that program requires intercession supplemental instruction that needs remediation or enrichment. So intercession meaning not just before and after school, but during break time and during summertime. ELOP must prioritize our unduplicated population and we must provide transportation for qualified students to a summer program if their homeschool is not offering ELOP sessions. And we currently do that and will continue to do that. We will bring these board policies back to you next month for any discussion and final report.
Thank you. Nine point three revised job descriptions, teacher special education extensive support needs and teacher special education mild moderate support needs. Dr. Garcia?
Yes, good evening, board members. These job description revisions have been requested to update the scope, responsibilities and terms to align with recent legislation. These drafts have also been shared with our labor partners and we're getting feedback from them. Tonight, these items are brought as an information item only and will be brought back for board action next month.
Thank you. Closing, closing items. Ten point one organizational matters. The next regular board meeting will take place on Thursday, November fourteenth, twenty twenty four at six thirty PM in the media center of the North County Regional Education Center. Two five five Pico Avenue, San Marcos, California, nine two zero six nine. This meeting is adjourned.